Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Monday, April 29th, 2024. It is 10:04 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and on Zoom, Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Carolyn Mejia. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder here with our budget team. The item for this morning's agenda, we're here until noon, is the 2024 Amendment One Second Review. Public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm going to look to Budget Manager. Okay, Nicole.
Oh, good morning. Thank you, Chair of the Board. We're here today to go through our second round of Amendment One. So for the 2024-2025 budget that was passed in December and took place in January, we're looking to amend it. We had our first review on April 17th, and today is that second and final decision. There were some follow-up questions to our first review, so as we go through the packets, we'll be asking for a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the items before you. I just want to bring to your attention that the decisions that are me today, they will be placed in the paper for public notice and then brought to you for a vote on June 4th. And that vote will be an all-inclusive up or down. You will not have the opportunity to say yes or no to individual items. It will be the entire amendment at that time. I'm going to... If there aren't any questions, then we're going to jump into the packets. And as we go through the packets line by line, if there's follow-up questions, we'll address them there. And if there's any need to look at attached financial plans or what have you, we will do that as well. So I'm printing it now, Commissioner. Um, and...
Printing it downstairs.
Yes, it should show up. So we're just taking a moment to ensure that everyone has the packet before them before we dive in. And we'll be starting with the technical transfers. So it would be your packet from April 17th. If you don't have that before you, we will have it up here on the screen, and also we can print it out. Did they all print? Try that again.
Thank you.
Did not print that properly.
Is there anyone around the table that would like a hard copy?
I want a hard copy. I know I didn't throw it. I just didn't see it in my office, so...
Same boat.
I know it's there, but I don't have it in front of me.
Right here, three, three, three.
One more.
Yes, let's give him one. Let's print in here. Let's get it. We'll try one more time. Let's see if this works. I might need some help.
Maybe that... You may not have the type of paper it needs if you want to print up to the top. We can run up there and grab it.
Okay.
This one came off on the small.
Yeah, I'm showing it as 11 by 17 landscape, but it keeps showing it as portrait.
Yeah, just print to the other printer. Okay.
I think I got it here. If not, let's see if that didn't work out. You need a copy as well? This time?
Coming on the big paper? Yeah, we're good. It's gonna be free copies.
So while we're waiting for the printouts to come, I just want to also mention that the packets before you, they are categorized in different groupings. The main two groupings are maintenance level and policy level. And maintenance level, again, is mandatory, like rate increases. An example would be like postage or something along those lines. Technical transfers or carryforwards, those items are maintenance. And then there are policy level requests, so those would be like new positions or new programs outside of the biennium. We did incorporate citizen input through a survey, and those were your policy level requests. So any packet that is policy level that did not have an offsetting revenue was placed before the citizens to be able to weigh in, and also any policy level personnel request. So we do have that information to share with you. So when we get to the policy level packet, we will share the weight and the response that we got back from the citizens.
See the options?
Speeding on some packets to print. I'll be right back. Thank you. Why don't you say "technical transfers" in front? Say that first. I'm hoping that the printout came out. Yes, okay. So then the first packet will say "technical transfers" at the top, and it's on the screen here before you. That's really good print. Looks like it. All right. Want me to keep going? Okay, I'll start. So the first line here, lines one and two. So again, what we're going to do is go through each request here, and I'll speak to what this request is. And then if there's any discussion, we'll have that, and then we'll ask for a vote. So lines one and two are in reference to a... And again, this is technical corrections. So these are things that may have been omitted during the 24-25 budget process, and so we're correcting those. And so the first item here is a position in the Clerk's Office that was approved in January of this year. However, the funding was not loaded. This is an Auditor's Maintenance and Operations Fund request. It's not a general fund request. It is to support the extension of the records position within the Clerk's Department. So I'll open it for questions. I can get into details if needed.
Questions on lines one and two?
Okay, so then I'm going to ask for a vote. This is either a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Two.
Three. Carolyn, the head of the ones are two.
Saw three thumbs and four thumbs. Yes, I found it. All good.
Okay. So the next request, line three. This is not on the errata list, is it, Jennifer?
This is what? This is on the errata list.
Okay, so also in your packet for today is a sheet called the errata list. So the errata list are any errors or corrections from the first time we viewed the packets that we need to make adjustments to. And on the errata list, it is the second line down where it says "technical transfers." This is line three, A11007, plotter lease. And so this request was pulled from the department. They no longer need this funding. And so we're not going to ask for a vote on it because it has been removed from your packet. And line four, so I'm back to technical corrections. Line four, that's change request A11103. This is for a copier lease based on GAZB. So the General Accounting Standards Board, you have to report your lease as you're purchasing that piece of equipment. So this is to add the expense and the revenue associated with that purchase, and this is for accounting purposes. It doesn't impact the general fund. It's a net impact. And so I'm going to ask for any questions before the vote?
Can you say four? It's four, which is A10206.
No, so line four, A11103. Sir, you're looking at the technical transfers packet.
Okay, I'm looking at a different sheet, A4. Okay, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Commissioner Mejia, just pipe in if you have something. We're going to be moving pretty fast, so...
Yep, nope, I'm good with it.
All right, so for the vote. We're in on line two. What's that? Five thumbs up? So line five, that is not on the errata list. So this is the same as the line before as far as recording our copier leases through emergency management and what is needed for accounting purposes. It's a net impact. No questions, then thumbs up or thumbs down. Vote. That's five again?
Yep.
Okay. So then line six through 12. This has to do with where funding is appropriated for a GIS analyst. So for the Public Works Department, they have a GIS analyst position that is embedded in IT. That position has already been approved during the biennium. This is a correction on where the funding is. It should be reported in the general fund and then assessed through the rates. However, this was directly charged to the individual funds. So it's just a correction on where that funding is. It's not an increase or a decrease of that amount. So any questions? If not, then I'll call for the vote. All right, five. Thank you. Line 13, this is for the Noxious Weeds. This is adjusting their spending plan, meaning Public Works, with what is intended to work with their work plan. So they're asking to move the revenue out of 2025 to move it in 2024 to match with their work plan for Noxious Weeds. And that's line 13.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I'm going to refer to Rob. Did we get that thing fixed about Noxious Weed business, about Public Works?
We're working on it.
This does not affect that?
It would likely be related to it, correct? 13 and 14.
This is the recording of the grant revenue in this current fiscal year.
I guess my question is, have we got that problem solved?
I cannot say that it's solved. I'm working on it, so it hasn't been resolved, but I think we can easily find resolution for it.
Okay, so don't worry about this particular...
I wouldn't worry about this.
Thank you.
So I'll call for the vote individually for line 13 and 14, but they are referencing the same thing. So line 13. Five votes, thank you. And line 14, again, with the Noxious Weed revenue moving into 2024. Going to call for the vote. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so lines 15 and 16. This has to do with carrying forward revenue out of the storm and surface water for '24 and revenue and expenses to match. And this is for the storm water project for Hopkins Ditch for the culvert replacement. So they're just asking for that authority to be in '24, the revenue and expenses to continue that project. Again, this are technical corrections. Okay, vote. Commissioner Mejia, thank you.
If I may, going back to Commissioner, that was specific to the not-weeded milfoil grants, just shifting years as opposed to the yellow flag iris, which is the issue that I'm following.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the Lake stuff.
Okay, line 17 and 18, this is a public work request. And so when we consolidated the utilities, this budget was placed in Tamashan Reserve, but it should be in the Consolidated Utilities Fund, which is the water utility reserve. You see that the amount is exactly the same. It doesn't increase or decrease budget. It is a technical correction. And I'm going to call for the vote if there aren't any questions. And Commissioner Mejia, and that's five. Commissioner Klaus, thank you. Okay, lines 19 through 21. This is a technical correction for the Lake Management Districts as well. When we were moving the Lake Management District Budget Authority from Public Works to Environmental Health, to Public Health, there was some truing up, making sure those expenses were not in the Public Works but into Environmental Health. And this is correcting that with the multiple lines. There were some errors. And so this is decreasing that expense authority that's associated with Public Works. It is not decreasing the overall expense authority that was appropriate for the Lake Management District. So if there aren't any questions, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Mejia, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Line 22 is within the Treatment Sales Tax Fund. So in the 2023 budget, there was $500,000 appropriated for residential housing. It was to purchase a three-bedroom home. That project did not go through in 2023, so they're asking to move that into 2024. When we balanced the Treatment Sales Tax Fund, we took into account the expense authority that would be included in 2023. So this does not increase the expense authority. It moves it from 2023 to 2024. So it's a timing. It's not an increase above what you had discussed with Treatment Sales Tax. So I'm going to call for the vote unless there's questions. And we do have the Treatment Sales Tax Fund financial plan here. There are requests later within the packet that do ask to increase the authority, and we can look at the funding plan there.
So on this one, the... Reading the note, the offer was made on a specific property, and then, and I think Commissioner Edwards and I were part of that, authorizing that on their end, and it was rejected. So it doesn't... There is no other property. It just says, we're asking to make the purchase, but it's just contingent on them finding some other property. I mean, why would we leave that hanging? It seemed, I mean, there wasn't any... It wasn't like we were... Having been in this on the front end, it wasn't like we were like, we got to spend $500,000 on a property. It was like if a property, an opportunity came available, now that that opportunity fell through, does it need to be sitting there for some other, you know, mythical other opportunity?
And so that's a question for you. If you would like them to continue in that direction, to find in 2024 another property that fits that specification in 2023, they would need that budget authority in this year to continue that effort. If not, then it would just fall.
That does appear to be what they're asking for, though.
Yes. Isn't that right?
In my sense, I'm looking at Commissioner Edwards. My sense was that, you know, the VHO ASO is not aggressively trying to seek this line of business. It was that opportunity came up, and someone said, could you do this? And then we're like, oh, yeah, I mean, you know, it's kind of...
It's a gentle tradition. It helps their mission.
Helps their mission, and they're willing to do it. But I didn't have the sense that they were out there trying to make sure that they acquired new properties for this purpose.
I see, Commissioner.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I do apologize. This hasn't been an item we've discussed at the recent VHO meetings, so I don't really have any context. I'm wondering, is this something that we can maybe hold until we have a conversation with the VHO? And if it's not something that is actively being pursued, then, you know, the money can come back?
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Let me answer that question if you're here.
I would say if the discussion does come up later that you would like them to pursue it, or if it is something that they're pursuing, they would need the authority in 2024. So an option could be to move it into 2024 contingent on follow-up.
But another...
Is that okay with the board?
I agree with that.
I think here, Commissioner Mejia, what was that?
Is that okay with the board?
I don't know. Commissioner Fournier? My question is, if we don't, you know, if there's nothing that's immediately been identified, and this is just kind of a goal, and we don't use this, does it put it back into the Treatment Sales Tax Fund, and then we could obligate it for more immediate needs, like maybe the Monarch request?
That is correct. It would be in your authority.
There would be appropriation authority sitting there. The question about reappropriating it for more immediate needs is a different conversation.
You would have to go back through the Treatment Sales Tax Committee?
You'd want it to go through a process of review.
I guess I'd like to have a simple solution, like somebody call Joe and just see where we're at on this thing.
So here's the dilemma...
That could be done in 10 minutes.
Though, with all due respect, and sorry to jump in, but the reason that we need a decision on this today is whatever decisions the board makes today is what will be posted in the newspaper, and you have an up and down vote. If you want to delay a decision today, that will delay the entire process because what you publish for the amendment is what you vote on. So today is when you need to make changes to what's in front of you. Leave it here and with the instruction to not spend it if they don't find an appropriate property or take it off, in which case they won't have the money to spend, should they find a house.
But we had a... We had a... Reviewing my notes from the last meeting, and we had the Monarch request, which we were being advised, don't necessarily approve that, but like this would connect those dots. And there isn't time to go back through any type of committee process, and that was the next... Like, we already know that the committee recommended that one, right? We took it off to find something else, so...
And then they re-recommended it again. So they made another vote recently for it to be added on to the budget amendment, so two votes.
So I emailed Joe Avalos. He's out of the office also. I also emailed Jason.
According to the TST program manager, they do have a real estate agent that has been actively looking for properties. Their concern is that the housing market is volatile, so...
Oh, Mark.
Could we do what Commissioner Mejia recommended with the $500,000? And also, I was... When we get to the Monarch, my question was going to be, can we use part of the revision? Because I saw that we had a 2023 revision for a little over a million. When that came up, I was going to suggest that, but since we're talking about it now, I didn't know if that was an appropriate means to fund the Monarch request or not. When that came up, I was gonna suggest that, but since we're talking about it now, I didn't know if that was an appropriate means to fund the Monarch Request or not.
Counting on a reversion in T S D, and I think you'll need to look at the financial plan as you make decisions about Monarch. But if you choose not to fund the house, um, then that does free up five hundred thousand.
I, I don't know why we can't get a simple answer from somebody over there, right? I mean, we've had a transfer of membership.
Where's over there?
P H A S O, Mark Friedman could be the next person to.
The answer was, they have a real estate agent that's been looking, but they haven't found, they haven't found.
Well, they thought they had it when we approved it. That's all I can say, I don't know what happened after that, because committee membership changed the first of the year.
And like I mentioned, there hasn't really been any, um, like, discussion about this with the.
I'd hate to jerk the money out from underneath them, but I can't imagine a small period of time, whatever that might be, to get ahold of somebody over there, isn't reasonable.
And Chen Fryhite from Public Health and Social Services is also chiming in, let me know that they are actively, uh, looking for a house, so.
I mean, I'm, I, I wanna fund Monarch myself, but I think I'd, I'm looking at it from a different position, similar to what, uh, Commissioner Klaus has mentioned.
Are there people sitting there waiting to, I mean, I, it's just inconsistent with my recollection that that this is pressing the need of mankind versus, yeah, we, we need more housing for folks that are, you know, need this transition, but it's more of a medium-term, you know, situation. An opportunity arose, okay, let's, we appropriated the money, nobody wants to lose appropriation. Let's take the money that the board appropriated and find another house, but meanwhile, we have other more pressing needs. We dialed back our community grants by five hundred thousand dollars, trying to make all the pieces fit, and so I'm just wondering about that.
The confirmation that we've gotten from Jennifer and from Joe was it?
Shaylyn.
Shaylyn, um, that they're looking out.
Can you tell me who, who those names, like?
Oh, Shaylyn Sowers is the T S T Program Manager in Public Health, and Jen, Jen Fryhite is the, um, Assistant Director. I'm like, I'm not sure.
But no one's talked to the B H A S O, is the way, and that's what the board is.
And that would be Joe Avalos, who is on, out of the office right now.
Right, who refers to Jason's on.
You know, I don't care if we call him if he's over in Hawaii, I don't care. I don't think it's a big deal.
So perhaps.
Sometimes we have to, uh, run people down.
Why don't, can, can Rob, you step out real quick and, and maybe take one of the analysts with you who knows the conversation, see if you can get ahold of somebody, so we can get some information? Yeah, just so we can put a pin in it, and you can keep going.
All that question being, if we pull this funding for, for the time being, what's the immediate consequence of that?
Thank you, Rob.
That we have to juggle versus our other, um, priorities.
Before Rob leaves, are there any other questions for the context of what they're asking that we'd like to get on the table to help make that decision?
Are you, who are you calling? B H A S O?
H S O.
Okay.
Track Joe down, basically, it's in his.
Or Mark. I, I, I think that Commissioner Menzer summed it up pretty well, it's like, th- this sounds like a goal. Meanwhile, we've got immediate needs, we've got requests from, from m- money for the lead program, we got requests for money for Monarch, and, you know, those are all T S T funds, right?
Yes.
Yeah, not, not saying that it's not important, but if there's an urgent item that you're trying to address, and we're trying to figure out where they're at in the process, and are they ready to pull the trigger, or will it just sit there while they look, and then we have a need that goes on that? All right, thank you too, I really appreciate your help.
Five hundred thousand, that request, does that not qualify for ARPA? Oh, I'd have to look into that.
Um, most likely not at this point.
I would ask.
Yeah.
I'd have to look into that. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Then we're gonna.
Kayla poisoned your coffee?
Yeah, she did.
To line thirty-three and thirty-four, this again is a technical correction, so this was a position that was approved during the biennium. But based on this position's duties, it should have been placed in, um, on fifteen hundred, which is the Public Health and Social Services Fund, instead of the Housing. So for a vote. Five thumbs up? Thank you. So we're done with technical corrections, except for that one that we'll come back and follow up on, and the next packet before us is maintenance level.
I don't know if you pointed out Commissioner's document that she presented, the responses to the questions. So Commissioners, uh, in, in, I get the tab the agenda, um, and I appreciate the budget team's work on this, but they went through the last meeting and took notes on the questions and framed responses in this document. That was pretty helpful.
Yeah, this is helpful, thank you.
Yeah, they give some background. Some additional context as to what your question was and how they're answering it.
Are you gonna go through, how are you gonna?
As we go through the packets, we'll refer to the follow-up, um, we're associated with that specific request. So when you get to maintenance, the first request here is, um, on your follow-up packet. On the right-hand side, it says what packet it's from, so it says maintenance. And then when we get to that specific line, line forty-four, we'll pull up the response, and we'll have that conversation with that specific request.
So you're gonna go line by line through every packet?
We're gonna go line by line every packet, yes, that's what our normal process is, is to go through the packets and ask for thumbs up or thumbs down. Do you suggest something else?
Generally, at this stage, we do, um, entire packets except for policy, but it's.
So if there is a question that the Commissioners had, we will address those lines, so that we can specifically address your follow-up and make sure that we've answered any questions that you did have. So for the maintenance packet, there are just two requests in this packet. Um, the first one is line one through forty-three, and that is where the credit card rebate, right?
Yeah, we don't need to go through those.
We don't need to go through all those.
No, you really don't.
So that's, that's gonna be the one line I would, I would group them all as one. I'll call for a thumbs up, okay. And then the last, uh, line on here is the one that we, you asked for follow-up, and that's, um, what the funding would be used for the Narcotics Trac, um, Task Force Revenue. And the answer to that is that the, uh, Sheriff's Office is looking to use it for overtime for the Corrections Office. So this is revenue that they collected based on seizes and foritures, um, and they have three years to spend it, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue that was corrected. They're asking to use it for overtime.
And it can be used for that?
Yes, it can.
I thought, like, the civil for- forfeitures could only be used for, like, drug enforcement?
Drug enforcement overtime for those.
But it's being used for corrections officers, and that totally qualifies?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean corrections, I meant law enforcement.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
I did not, yeah. So I'll call for the vote, unless there's more follow-up, if not. Is that five thumbs up? All right, so then we're done with that packet. Anything like in response to, um, the Assistant County Manager, uh, the carry-forward packet here, um, the public is going on three, which is for the Historic Preservation Grant Carry Forward, that is Change Request A one oh three oh one. The question asked for that specific, um, request was, what is going on with the Buery Falls car project, what is the status? And so the answer to that is that the county is still waiting on a timeline to figure out what's going on with that project, that they're hoping by February ninth, that we should have gotten an update.
Have you not heard from them at all, is that?
The last time we, the last time they had an update was February ninth. So, uh, they're still waiting on a timeline for the scope of work and the budget for the grant, um, from the Olympia Tomb Water Foundation.
When it says our, does that mean your, your Thurston County? Cause I don't remember getting as a board member, update on February ninth.
Yes, so.
That came to the, the county.
To the county.
Okay.
Yes. So we can follow up to see what is going even further, what's going on with that, but at this point, we're still waiting on a project timeline.
Is that money part of this, this item here?
Yes, so it's a hundred thousand dollars, they're asking it to. Exactly, Commissioner. It's a hundred thousand dollars that was awarded in twenty-three, that they're asking to move into twenty, twenty-four, and the project is, they're still identifying that time.
And what fund is this out of?
This is out of the Historic Preservation Fund.
Okay, and the RAC, uh, the kiosk project, that's the thirty thousand?
Yes.
That's almost done, I think, isn't it? Done?
I'd have to look on the status on that project.
We had a problem with the M O U, like, we needed an agreement with Lacy on M and O, and I was told, or we were told quite a while back that we figured that out.
But the brewery thing is still just paying fire, basically, isn't it?
Trying to get state money, I think, to.
Yeah.
The Tonino Mount Small Potatoes, but their treasurer was in, like, Spain for six months, and she's back now. That was the whole, though.
Oh, no, four thousand dollars, that's a whole lot.
Who's making that audio to her, the contractor or somebody local?
Jessica's got local folks that she's recording, and.
Yeah. You can just, is it like a phone app?
I'm, I'm hoping so, and they've got a bunch of kiosk, or like, you know, like interpretive signs that they can put Q R codes on, and you could go in and be like, boof! And then he, Phillip's voice would talk about something, and.
Yeah. That's really good.
Yeah.
So that was the only item in the carry-forward packet. We can go line by line, unless there is something else specific you'd like to discuss, we can move on it as a collective, as the county can.
Yeah, no package, because it's all technical, with no general fund impact. All of it money that was not spent, that you already approved for projects that you've already approved.
Okay, any objection to just voting on the packet?
I, I'm wondering about that, uh, five hundred and sixteen thousand from ARPA.
Sure.
Line four.
That's line four, so Exchange Request A one oh three oh two, and it's asking to have the, um, expense authority at five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And so in twenty twenty-three, we had appropriation, um, we anticipated what would be spent, it wasn't spent, so we're asking to carry it forward into twenty twenty-four. During your, um, bimonthly meetings for ARPA briefings, where you're updated on the fifty-six point four million dollars that you're earmarking, this is in line with that, to be able to continue with that direction that you give during those briefings. So this is just moving authority from one year to another.
One to the, yeah, no, no expenditure.
Nothing new, nothing new.
Everything that you decided on, just to make sure we can carry it out in twenty-four.
The forward packet is already things that you approved.
So voting on the packet. Five thumbs up.
That was carry forward?
That was carry forward, the next is grants. So I'll jump to the follow-up packet, so lines twenty-seven and twenty-eight. This is concept, this is, uh, the not just weeds grant with L and Bs. And so this was grant funding that was appropriated, um, in the twenty twenty-three for Public Works inside the L and D Fund. This is asking to move it out of the L and D Fund into not just weeds, it does not change what that grant funding is approved for, nor does it decrease the expenditures that will be used for that. Um, the questions were, can this grant be used to purchase the boat? And the answer to that is that the grant was appropriated for eradication of, um, I'm gonna say it incorrectly, Eldo, Elbia population, thank you. And so it cannot be used to purchase the boat, it has already been, um, approved for specific funding by the grant.
And the boat has been sold.
And the boat has been sold.
And where did that revenue go when it was sold?
Well, the boat, um, I believe had belonged to Public Works, so it either went to Public Works or it went into the E R N R Fund, because the boat was in E R N R.
That ship has sailed.
The follow-up.
Sorry.
The boat has, uh, floated on.
Yeah.
It, it did not belong to them.
And then the other question was, uh, if the grant was for under, a little under forty thousand, why is the amount twenty-nine thousand? And the answer to that is that twenty-nine thousand or ten thousand was already appropriated, is that correct? And now we're doing twenty-nine thousand.
So for the grant, they had actually only, um, appropriated twenty-nine thousand instead of the full thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. So they're correcting the mistake from prior year, and they're also bringing in the money that was already in the incorrect fund.
So, okay, let me just check that. So that ten thousand dollars that was inquired about has already gone into that fund?
Yes, they're putting it in this year. So it was originally thirty-nine thousand, but when they, when they put it in in twenty twenty-three, they only put in twenty-nine thousand. And the grant is, timeframe of the grant is all the way until six twenty-five.
It's just a technical adjustment, it's an accounting thing.
They did not report the entire grant of thirty-nine thousand, so now they are addressing, adjusting that. So they're taking the twenty-nine that they placed in twenty twenty-three, moving that into the not just weeds fund, and also the ten thousand that they should have booked in twenty twenty-three, they're now booking in. Last question in this packet is line thirty-seven. Jennifer and Dolly have worked really hard to answer these questions for you guys and put the response back. And so this request right here also is one that Jennifer worked really hard in, um, answering, so I'm gonna, gonna let you answer. All your hard work.
Okay, so this is, uh, a grant for lead services, this is a grant from Healthcare Authority, so your question was, why is the split different between two years? So this is a grant that we get from Healthcare Authority. Um, this is a new funding, Healthcare Authority said, hey, we have extra money, Thurston County spend it for us. Um, we reached out to the V H O, and the V H O asked for the, um, funding to be split in this manner. The, um, funds end in June of twenty twenty-five, so we only have six months to spend it in the second year, but the, this is why the split is the way the split is.
Right, so the question was, is the funding, what's going on with the lead funding, is it decreasing? And the amount, the answer is that this is a one-time supplemental award, and that the reason why you see three hundred and sixty thousand in twenty-four and two hundred and forty in two thousand and twenty-five is the splitting of when those resources will be used, when that authority will be used, but it's a one-time supplemental, uh, grant. Did you want to add something? I see that you're.
I see something in Rob's head, and she wants to get out.
So this is the lead money, right? And we're, many of us at the table are familiar with lead. Um, we were told the first year that we received it, that it would be one-time, and that the county would have to fill in in future years, and every year we've been successful at getting additional funds. So at this time, it looks like now it's one-time, but we don't know. So it could be that by the time we get to twenty twenty-five, um, we will once again receive more money.
June, but June of twenty twenty-five is what we're funded through?
Cause that's the end of a state biennium.
Okay, um. All right, thank you.
So that is the grant pa- packet, there were no other questions that we noted that you had for this packet. Um, I could call for the vote for the entire packet unless there are other questions that we should.
Can you just touch that one million? Line thirty-eight, A forty-one. Eight one forty-one. Nine thirty-eight, yes, last line.
So it looks like the contract through the D H S S, they have in, they've gotten another a million dollars in, um, so they're looking to book that revenue and appropriated expenses to match that.
That was one of those other dollar amounts that come in periodically. That was one of those other dollar amounts that come in periodically.
The board already approved the contract.
I got it. Okay, good enough. Just couldn't remember it.
As you look at the bottom line, at the bottom of page five, you see that there's no impact, no negative impacts to the general fund. And, uh, other funds are pretty much even.
Call for the vote. Thank you. I think this would be a good time to circle back through the packet and transfers. To speak about the three bedroom. For treatment sales tax. One twenty two.
So, uh, thank you for the extra time, Commissioners. Joe, I was not able to reach, but I was able to speak with Jason B. Mortensen, Mortensen. And as it was relayed to, uh, Jennifer and I, uh, basically they had two months at the end of twenty twenty three to kind of identify housing. They were not able to identify housing in that timeframe. Um, and then they, basically because it would require new appropriation or reappropriation in twenty twenty four, they put their search on pause. Um, but they are confident that they will be able to be successful as we get into the warmer months and more housing stock come, becomes available to actually find, identify housing. And just, uh, as a reminder, this specifically, the focus of this housing is to assist True Blood, uh, clients, individuals who are waiting sort of their, um, competency restoration, et cetera. All of those pieces, um, are in the, the play at this point in time.
True blood clients?
True Bloods, so Commissioner.
Basically, it's people who are in jail, but who are facing like, like mental competency. Like it's a very, it's a very narrow group of people who are accused of crime, who may not even understand what they're charged with, you know? And so they, 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 they really need to be sent for a value, forensic evaluation, and that's Washington State Hospital thing. Like there was such a backlog, cause that wasn't being managed right and didn't have capacity that people were sitting in jail. So the, they were, state was sued and then this money was created, this True Blood funding for programs and trying to get folks like, you know, places besides sitting in jail, waiting for the evaluation that, that, that the state can't actually provide in a timely fashion. So we've got folks that go into the jail and do stuff and, and work on release plans and then, but like what's a problem for those release plans sometimes is where to place them at. Like, everybody could say, oh yeah, they could be under this really, you know, nicely drawn up plan, they could be out of jail if they had someone to go where to go. So that's where this fits in, like creating more housing options so that there's a place to, 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 to just place these folks if there's an appropriate plan otherwise. But that stuff is usually funded through True Blood. I mean, usually True Blood has dedicated, they're not usually going after T S T money.
Yeah, I'm curious about that too.
They have these other sources of money and we've gotten True Blood grants of all different sorts that fund these programs.
My understanding was that the True Blood money has dried up.
But the responsibility is still there.
Absolutely.
How many people would be housed in a three, like is it one person per room or would they be doing shared rooms? Do we know?
I do not.
I think it's individual bedrooms if I remember.
Yeah, I think it's like, they try to find a house where four people could be with their own bedroom and somebody manages it and.
It isn't the best system in the world. It's filling in for the state that's inadequately dealing with the problem.
I think they're looking to house five to six individuals, but I don't know if it's single occupancy rooms or not. I don't, don't have the familiarity with what they're programming.
And so what happens if we don't do it?
Um, then the, then we are back to where we are. There's less capacity in the community and they are continuing to be housed until they find some other alternative in the jail. Or, you know, other settings.
On the street.
On the street.
A lot of them end up.
Well, they just.
At least they won't wear, ooh.
I don't wanna say this out of turn, but I think it's, they don't end up on the street. They end up staying in jail.
I'm personally aware of people who have ended up on the street from the True Blood program, but, um.
Cause I mean, as their lawyer, they couldn't get, you couldn't get them out, you know, you need, you just sit there and it would be months and months.
No, it is, it's really ridiculous, but unfortunately, a lot of people, because it's unconstitutional to have them sitting in the jail. When I worked for Office of Forensic Mental Health Services, we saw a lot of people being let out of jail.
By the judge?
Yeah, by the judge. Because of how long it takes, it's gotten so bottlenecked that they, they're like, you know, we can't, cause they.
Stretching a little bit to try to, for these people that.
Or people get their cases dismissed because the evaluations don't come quick enough. A lot of people are on the waitlist for an evaluation for a long time, although the jail evaluations are prioritized. They have to be done within two weeks. But, um, under extenuating circumstances, like if someone's already been evaluated and they're waiting for a restoration at Western State, they can't hold them in jail while they're waiting. So a lot of those people get dismissed and they are classified as True Blood members. And they're just on the street. I've actually worked with like a handful of people who are True Blood members who are on the street and their cases are the most extreme. Although even given all of this information, I'd be interested in, um, seeing how we could fund the Monarch program and if it comes down to choosing between this and the Monarch program. Because this would only help a small group of people and Monarch has kind of, yeah. I would prefer to fund Monarch if that's the choice we come down to, but I was interested in looking at the alternative funding sources for Monarch if we have that available, the reversions. But I would need to understand what that means a little bit more. I just saw on the T S T financial plan that it said we had a reversion of one million, twenty six thousand. But that's projected for twenty twenty four, so I guess that, that's not money we have now, right?
Well, and that's part of what's shoring up your fund balance.
So what we've seen historically, if I may, just, just, okay, so what we've seen historically is that in T S T funding, that there is a reversion amount. So every year, even though they have a certain amount of appropriation, they're not spending it all. And to be able to make some of the decisions during the biennium and to fund some programs, we use that in our forecasting, saying that if this continues to happen, then we can fund these new things. And so it's not truly a reversion in the sense that can be spent. It is helping you be able to fund the things and decisions that already have been made.
Okay.
So to be.
Commissioner Mejia was first and then Commissioner.
Um, I was going to say, can this be a legislative request? I mean, that we do as a region with the H O, the county, um, asking not just for one housing, but for two, um, houses and. I mean, I don't see. If, if this is a state responsibility, then I, putting an additional burden on T S T when there are so many local, other local needs. I, I think that we can request an appropriation request from the state.
Would BHO be making that request and we just support it? Is that?
We can talk with Joe, me and Commissioner Klaus, since we both sit on that board and see if there is a path that way, but if, kind of what I'm hearing, right, it's that the True Blood Fund has dried up and, you know, that's why we're having to shore it up with T S T. I had a different recollection, but I'm not, you know, my recollection is obviously wrong, so I'm just saying that we should make a request for it. I.
Uh, I guess, uh, following up on what, uh, Commissioner Klaus said. My view of this is, is similar to hers where we're just doing a, we're assisting a few people that are already failures, if you will. Pardon? I'm gonna call them failures, just the way I look at it. And if we help Monarch do their job, we're trying to intervene and solve some problems before they become failures. So that's where I'm at. And so I'm inclined to, maybe go for different reasons or not, but I, I think that, that makes sense to me is try to prevent these folks spiraling into wherever they end up. And so I'm inclined to put the money towards Monarch.
Can, so, I'm not sure where this fits, but I think it fits somewhere. Didn't, cause I was reviewing my notes from last week and we had a lead related request too from T S T. And how does that fit into what you already said about?
Unrelated.
And how would that fit into this Monarch thing versus this, um, BHSO thing?
We do have a T S T packet, don't we? A policy level T S T packet. If you're looking to see what all the requests are at one time against treatment sales tax, turn to that and see what those are.
Where do you want us to go?
So.
T S T.
Yeah, policy level T S T.
Yes, so that would be.
So this is the lead request.
So there's, these are the two. We've got Monarch and Lead, right?
Yes.
Two seventy and one hundred thousand. And the lead is for, I mean, the, the statement in Lead just tells us what Lead is. It doesn't say why we're having a supplemental funding request, for what?
Yeah.
And that's, is that in the follow up packet?
I think I have that in my follow up packets. Gotta look into that. One second. All right, so our follow up is just to look at the treatment sales tax fund. We're asking if this request was related to, um, another request from Public Power. And the answer is no, so yeah, this would be a direct impact, a hundred thousand dollars.
It is related to the lead grant. Is it not?
It's related to the lead grant, but it's not related to the one-time funding that the other lead request is in this packet. The, the lead request that's in the, uh, grant packet is a one-time request standalone. This one is related to our existing contract with Lead, so.
So, so in twenty twenty four, how much was the original appropriation for Lead? And how much do these two items, both the grant and this additional hundred thousand, add for Lead?
So the contract for Lead is one point one million dollars.
Currently.
Currently. So this would be an additional two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars for that two, um.
For the two-year period or the, just the one year?
Two-year period, one hundred thousand in each.
So a million dollars currently plus the grant.
Plus the two hundred thousand that we want to shore up, plus the additional six hundred.
And what's the extra two hundred thousand gonna do for them?
So this is, going back to history, the original lead grant, when we got it in twenty twenty, um, required a match. We were already providing treatment sales tax funding to it. Um, the new grant does not require a match, but it doesn't, it also doesn't cover all of the costs that, um, BHO needs to, um, do the lead program.
All of what costs? Which costs?
So this has to do with the fifty cases that they wanted to be able to help with?
Yeah. So they have, they, when they put their contract together, they say, and these are example numbers, not real numbers. We can, um, cert, we, we, we'll be able to cert, we want to cert fifty people. The, um, the grant award, when we originally did it, the, uh, the Healthcare Authority grant, plus what we supplemented for our match, covered the fifty people. The match went away because they said, you don't need a match anymore. And that doesn't cover all fifty people that they want to serve, so this brings us back up to what we were serving people.
And when you look at the financial plan, you can see if the board were to approve all of these things, that they would be in the hole in twenty twenty seven to the tune of a million dollars over spent. So you really can afford to do everything.
So the financial plan includes the requests that were done during the biennium. So the financial plan before you, on the back of it, it has all of the requests that were approved during the biennium. It has the requests that were not funded during the biennium. And it also takes into account what's on Amendment One. So the financial plan in front of you was all included, the requests that are before you and the decisions that were made during the biennium. And so if you were to include the amendment request, the five hundred thousand for the particular building that, or the house that we're talking about, and also Monarch.
Can we all just get there? Cause there's a lot of papers. It's, it's stapled to a big paper and it's small. It says ten-year financial plan on the front. Make sure this is just right here. This is what it looks like. It's a big piece, David.
Is it a big piece?
Yeah, yours is small.
I think it's when it got printed out.
You're looking at the interlocal drug enforcement. It's the small one. Yep, that one. That's the T S T.
Looking at the small one. So, I'm sorry, Nicole, so if I'm looking at this plan that you passed out, does that not include these two requests or it does include them?
It does.
Does.
So if we funded both of those, this is where we'd be?
Yes.
Which doesn't look like a very good place to be.
Correct.
And if we don't fund them, how much is it better? I mean, it's better, but how much better?
Well, it is better because it, it does not allow the department to spend on these items. Um, if.
I mean, do we need to, I guess what I'm saying is, that's not good. If we take the two requests out, is it good enough? Or do we also need to back out the five hundred thousand from Monarch and not spend it on anything else?
I would.
This is assuming we don't back out that. I'm sorry, the five, yeah, this is assuming we, we grant everything. Yeah, but if we back out that five hundred thousand, it changes the picture, right?
The five hundred thousand is a one-time cost, whereas the Monarch is ongoing, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars every year.
But they'd have to come back and request that.
That's a big difference. Right, so you're.
Right, and, and that is the request. And again, the reason it's before you is that they had come in for another community award. The community money is theoretically one-time seed money, and it's not supposed to be ongoing. A comment that was made during the budget process was, if they want ongoing funding, they need to come in, in the appropriate budget cycle and request that. The midterm is the time to do that. That's this fall, but they decided to come in in the amendment because they need the money now. Um, but now is not the time. It, it's not the appropriate time to take this up, in my opinion. Um, so you've got this in front of you and once again, you're being asked to make a decision on something in a vacuum, if you will. Because as Nicole showed you on this page, you have a lot of requests that you said no to. And you're treating Monarch, you're giving them preferential treatment, if you will. Everything is a need. It's all important. But you're not being given an opportunity to weigh this against all the things that are needed in this particular fund. And you've already committed the fund. So it, it's something to think about. Timing and cycles are important when it comes to budget.
I have a different view than, than what Robin does. Um, you know, uh, this, again, this was, the advisory committee met up and they voted unanimously again to request funding for this. Um, and, you know, it is an unforeseen circumstance. And that's why it, you know, it got added to the Amendment One. Um, again, we're.
What's the unforeseen?
Well, the unforeseen circumstance is the fact that, you know, they were told they were going to receive this funding and then, and this was.
They would be recommended to the board.
Well, yeah, and then they got, I mean, the board made an initial decision and saying like, yes, we're going to move forward with these. And then they got told that, right? And then later, at a later meeting, it got switched up. And that's when they got told again. I mean, they were already told in the November, December timeframe that they were going to receive this funding. Um, because that was the initial decision. The, that initial decision got changed later on. And, you know, then basically they had to like rearrange everything. And that's the unforeseen circumstance is that an organization had already been told, yes, you've got the thumbs up, we can go ahead and budget for this. And then it got changed.
It got changed like a couple of weeks later.
But it still saw a draft contract, I think.
Yeah.
When we made that initial decision, they were sent a draft contract and the rug was kind of pulled out from underneath them. I do consider, I, I agree with Commissioner Mejia that that is an unforeseen circumstance. Not only that, but there's the additional layer of misinforming the T S T advisory committee that they had eight hundred thousand and then switching that to three hundred thousand. I mean, this whole process, I understand like the bureaucratic process and how this should ideally be coming during the budget cycle in a different time, but this is an immediate need and their waitlist keeps. this is an immediate need, and their waitlist keeps backing up. The reason why I advocate so strongly for this is because it's the only community-based organization providing services for victims of child abuse and neglect in our whole community, and I went and visited with them and toured the, um, facility after we made that decision for the T S T grants last year, um, and I saw and heard about what the impact really is. Um, but I mean, we do have these fiscal needs, and if it, you know, if it doesn't fit, I would recommend digging deeper into the other funding sources to see if we can find the money for it, because I think this is really important.
I mean, if we're talking about, you know, being concerned about a court backlog, right, and putting a lot of resources at that, right now, like, they have to wait basically over a year in order to, like, for families and children to access services. Because their waitlist is currently at seventy-eight, that list just keeps growing, and without these funds, it's gonna be these funds, and the reason why it's larger is to address those seventy-eight cases as quickly as possible, and, you know, when, uh, we staff sat down with Monarch and kind of evaluated, what is it to actually address that waitlist? This is kind of what was, you know, they came up with, and the advisory committee agreed, like, yes, we want to, that's a huge need in our community. Once again, we've beat the state average for child abuse in Thurston County, like, that's it's not a statistic that we should be proud of, and we should be doing everything we can to address this need, and if it's setting aside this funding and tightening our belt in other places, like, I, I really do think we need to do it.
Can staff help me just make sure, we're, we're going through so many things? And I want to be consistent. Was that a four-to-one vote, or a three-to-two vote? Uh, and I lost, I'm, I, I'm, and I'm trying to go back to the democratic process.
On the Monarch item? We'd have to look back and see what the vote on that was.
Initial one was three-to-two, and then, once it came down to the final vote, since it was a decision that the majority of the board did, I voted with the majority of the board.
So you and I were
Yeah.
on the same page, basically, to a, to a start, okay, so it sounds like we're flipping the vote, now that, now we're gonna have three to two, is that what I'm hearing?
Wasn't Monarch taken off in favor of something?
Interface.
Interface.
Interface, that's right.
Definitely.
And so, okay, so now we're gonna flip, and I'm, and, and I've kind of got it right.
It's not the same vote, I, I, I object to that characterization of any of this, and I'm the one that's come up with this idea to pull the pull the B H S O funding and try to fund Monarch, but I'm not gonna spend this fund into bankruptcy, so tell me what you're not gonna fund, if you want my vote on this thing, because we cannot, this financial plan is not is not sound, it's not responsible, and we made decisions, and you, and you teed that up and convinced me to change my vote.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're at.
What if we didn't fund the, and I think we already said this, but, because it's, I'm, yeah, there's a lot of details. If we don't fund the B H A S O House, does that free up enough money, and then we would, we would still need to cut something else, because that's not enough.
The, the purchase of a home is a one-time item, Monarch is asking for ongoing funding.
So it's not just for the biennium, they're asking for annual?
Yes.
Well, we could still fund it, as, like, you get one time, and then.
To fund them one time, and put them on notice that you're not going to fund them again.
Well, that's what would have happened had they gotten the community grant, right?
That is exactly what they would have received in the.
So that doesn't necess- I mean, we're not promising them they're gonna get ongoing funding.
That's right.
I mean, that's how I'm thinking of it.
And, and at no time have you.
It's trying to help undo kind of them not getting the funding in the community grant, um, without any promise of them getting it next year.
Um, what, what would it take for, on the sheet, are you looking to bring that up?
Yes, Jennifer's bringing it up now, she's gonna back out.
The, the sheet that you've presented today has us going into the negative, uh, in year out, is it twenty twenty-seven? Can you explain that a little bit more, cause I think that is part of the discussion that's happening here? The, what I hear the board saying is that they want to understand how to make a decision, but there's some concern about making that decision and it going into the negative.
The, this shows that Monarch request being funded ongoing, right? And that's, I mean, I'm not suggesting that right now.
So she can pull, Jennifer can pull up the ten-year plan in Excel. Back out. She can show you what it is right now, with the five hundred thousand in there one time, and the two seventy ongoing. Back that out, and see what it would look like.
Well, right, but, but I think it's not gonna be ongoing, cause it sounds like it has to be approved every single year, is that correct?
No. This request is to make it ongoing.
Oh, okay.
So, we can.
Our suggestion can be different.
So she can throw up different items there, right, she can show it just being in, um, so do you have it up?
Yeah, this is the plan that matches.
What's in front of them?
What's in front of you. And if we take out the five hundred thousand dollars and reduce the five hundred thousand dollars. What?
Said, look at you, Excel whiz.
Oh yeah, just having. But, we can, we can say whiz, um, here's what it looks like.
And does this have the Lead money?
It has the Lead money in it, and it has the Monarch money in it as well still, so it, I only took out the five hundred thousand dollars for the House.
Can we, can we see what it looks like if that Monarch money is a one-time thing?
So, back out.
And the same with the Lead money?
Escape, escape.
Sorry.
No, cause it's based on the formula.
It's based on it, okay.
Or Nicole, how long would it take your team to come back with a recommendation that balances that out, taking into consideration some of the options the board would want to give you, is to say, hey, this is what we want to see happen? Can you come back with recommendations? How long would it take?
Well, I mean, um, we could turn around fairly quickly if we needed to, to be able to make the decisions, because this is passing.
Can I ask a question? Or, or a recommendation, um, I would recommend that, um, we don't fund the B H O House, right, that we work with the B H O to come up with a legislative request, appropriations request, and that we fund the Monarch for the year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and then that the board take a closer look at the treatment sales tax, um, and what it, exactly it is we're funding, because we're funding a whole lot of things that I honestly, we didn't even get a chance to go into, and some of the things, it, we've just been funding just because, and I, I really would like to take a closer look at this fund and see like, what was the initial intent of putting this out there, what is it that we're currently funding, and what does it really need to be funded? I, um, I think T S T has been, in a way, an effort for, like, you know, hard times have called for hard measures, I understand that, and we've like, put that burden on T S T, but I, I just, I think this is one of the funds that, I would like to take a closer look and see exactly what it is that we're funding.
I, I don't disagree that there could be things that fall into that category, but we do have our advisory committee, and they do look at these programs, and we've looked at all of them, and they do make recommendations to, to pull funding back. They're like the only committee that I've ever seen to do that, so they do perform that function, I mean, ultimately, buck stops with us, and we can certainly look at it, and I don't, I don't oppose that, but I would just point out that, I mean, we get, we get that level of scrutiny, we're supposed to, from the advisory committee, and we do get funding requests. Or recommendations that reduce funding, the programs, and that hasn't always been popular with the programs, but.
I know that they're taking a real close look on revenue that T S T gets, and where it's coming from and how it's being spent right now, they're kind of reevaluating because of what went on uh, to see what the prioritization needs to change or something, I, I just know they're also looking at it, so.
I think it's a body of work that they're trying to have accomplished by this summer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Claus?
So we have a work session with Shailin, to just understand further what's going on, I acknowledge the T S T advisory committee is doing a lot of this due diligence already, but from my understanding, and potentially for others' understanding as well, it would be probably useful to have a work session, just to understand like what's going on, and kind of what Commissioner Mahia said, I think that's a good idea. Um, and then, one other point, um, that I wanted to make, which, I love the Lead program, I think they do good work, but I think if we're gonna scrutinize what's happening here to be able to fund Monarch, we should consider the fact that like, B H A S O and Lead have access to a lot of other funding sources. Um, unfortunately, the reality is for children who have experienced assault or neglect, there's like no funding sources. And that's why we only have one community-based organization doing that work. Um, so that's why I'm advocating so strongly for this, I know procedurally and, and fiscally, there are some concerns, but whatever we can do to find a way to fund that, um, while understanding that other organizations have a lot of support right now, I think that that's important for us to consider too. Cause like, Lead and reentry and housing, all of those have so much access to like federal dollars, there's tribal money going into that, state and local money, but this, for Monarch, there's like no other source, which is why they're coming back to ask for it, because it's an urgent need.
And that kind of coincides with what Commissioner Mahia just said too, right, so.
Yeah.
Well said.
I think I'm, I'm with you.
Proposals. The first is no to the House. The second is yes for at least two years for Monarch. And the third is on Lead, and I've heard a suggestion to say yes to the grant, but no to the additional two hundred thousand to Lead. And, that gives you some time to take a hard look at T S T in the midterm.
Why are we saying two years funding for Monarch?
That, that was the proposal I heard on the table.
For the biennium?
So, so if we take them one by one, yes or no to the House?
No.
No. This is five hundred and forty thousand dollars then, for Monarch's asking?
Yes.
Two seventy, twice.
That, that is the proposal, not that you have to vote on it that way. But, I'm hearing a no to the House, is that?
That's right, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm there with the no on that, if we're going this other direction.
I, I, I can I see what the financial plan looks like, the way we dialed it up with, with the House, without these two requests, the way we left it when we left the budget?
Oh, that's a really good.
Um, that will take me some time to find that one.
Yeah, I, I think what we need to do is, what I'm hearing is that the commissioners need to see their, their decision played out into the, uh, the projection. That's why I'm asking, how, how long will it take to make that change?
So if you want to see the decision played out, we would, um, reverse all the Amendment Ones in this particular financial plan, and that would be it playing out, um, we've got expenditures this year, so it's not true allotment anymore, but twenty-five, twenty-five is the appropriation for the year.
The challenge I'm having is, you, we're presenting something that's in the negative, and asking to spend more money, that's like counterintuitive. So I don't understand, as I'm sitting here following the discussion, how we're going to switch money around and how that's gonna balance out. So that's what I think offline, you can put that together and come back, that's at least what, what my recommendation would be, so they can.
There's only two requests though here. So why is that so difficult? It's not backing out a whole bunch of numbers, it's two, really, it's two, two numbers.
Right, but, what I'm suggesting is, how much is the House, five hundred? And you say no to, to Lead, so there's seven hundred, it is not on this plan. And then you say yes to two years of Monarch, then the plan still looks pretty much like this. I mean, that's a quick and dirty, and, um, with only two years for Monarch, then you buy time to get to the midterm and take a deeper look at T S T overall.
So, I think that while, you know, the board, the T S T advisory board is looking kind of at the overall budget, I think it would be a good, a good idea to request maybe a proposal from the T S T advisory board to see where the underspend is coming from, right, and kind of what is leading us into this negative in the upcoming years, and, um, asking for asking a proposal from them, and, and seeing like, you know, does this kind of go with what we're trying to figure out, are there programs that they are continuing to underspend this, and, and we just need to kind of reallocate those funds, um, so.
Depending on the direction of the board, we could, to answer your question, we could come back tomorrow with more information on a more true-up financial plan, if that's the need.
But to Commissioner Mentor's comment, it's just two numbers.
I've done it.
Yeah.
I've done it.
That's where we left.
This, this is, um, so the one that you're talking about where we at, we, where we added on, I'd have to dig through to find that one. Where we were making the decisions, and we were plugging everything in with the decisions that we made when we were doing the biennial budget, is that the one that you're referring to?
All I'm saying is, I wanted to see like, if we, before these amendment requests were made, and before we were discussing, we're pulling the five hundred thousand that's already there, right?
Right.
What was there in twenty-three that's not?
So this is that financial plan, so this financial plan is.
I'm looking at kind of what the, yeah, what the projection looked like.
So twenty-four, twenty-five, what you said yes to in twenty-four, twenty-five, she's taken out all the Amendment One stuff, so this is what that financial plan will look like.
Okay, so this is where we were, this is where we started, when the amendment started.
Yes.
Now we've got these three balls to juggle.
Eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year, and then, two seven, three seventy and twenty-five.
So the five hundred thousand one time?
If we don't move the five hundred thousand forward, it's, it goes back into this plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And then that frees us up to fund basically one thing.
Still have a, I mean, even, my, my, my point is.
Still in the negative.
But we're at, like, I mean, we're two million down, we're another two million down, we're another two mil- like, we're losing two million dollars a year out of this fund. Based on where, so I mean, I, my inclination is to pull the B H O House and not grant any, I mean, just to make it a little bit better than this, which is not good. So, that's, that's what I needed to see, so I guess I, I know where I'm at.
And it would also provide the time for the T S T advisory committee to go through their body of work to help provide, support the board with a level of analysis of those ongoing expenditures.
Hey, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and is, is there any appetite for just funding that Monarch request one year? Pulling back that B H A triple Z S N W O P House? And leaving the Lead request out, I mean, is that, is there appetite to take that on?
I feel like that wouldn't really do, I mean, that would allow Monarch to like hire somebody and get them up to speed.
Teach them the job and then fire them.
Yeah, and then they lose the funding, that would be.
But that's what their request was.
Wasn't it for two years, or? Wait, when they sent in the request?
When they came to T S T funding, I thought it was they requested one year of funding.
They, their first request is to hire staff. Oh, it wasn't to hire staff, I thought it was to hire clinicians?
The hundred thousand that they made beforehand wasn't to hire staff, this is to hire staff, this request right now.
Do you recall what the first request is for?
The, the request, previous request was just to kind of keep basically the ongoing services. Um, staff went back to Monarch and asked them, what is it that we, you know, to address that backlog that has been carrying on for these years, what is it that you'll need? And so this is where it came, the positions came from.
Okay.
So, this is.
Slightly expanded request than was initially.
And so this is why there, it, it is two seventy-six, it's for them to actually address the huge backlog that they, you know, they've just been limping along with. Um, I, I think the, you know, one year, I agree with Commissioner Claus, that it, it's just hard, especially when we're talking about hiring staff. That's why I'm, I'm suggesting just twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and then just kind of with touching base with our T S T advisory board, uh, who is working closer with this budget than we are, and kind of seeing like, what are the touchpoints where we might need other things that we might need to cut off?
I just want the record to reflect that everybody knows, at least you guys know how hard I fought for the Lead program and how dedicated I've been to it, and you know, I'm willing, you know, this is gonna get twenty percent reduction in the scope of that program, but I'm gonna do that, I don't want to, I don't want to, Monarch to feel like I'm picking on them, cause I'm not, I know it's really important, but um, I just don't see that we can fund all this stuff, so.
So I'm, I'm hearing that there's an advisory group that provides input on budgets, um, but are we the ones that balance out the request to make sure that the budget balances in years out?
Yes, so our department, Shaylyn, she is the administrator or manager over, what is her title financially?
Yes, she's the treatment sales tax manager, treatment sales tax program manager.
You've already done this, you know, before I got here, but did we have conversations with the board about what it would take to balance that number in the out years?
When we were going into picking those requests for 24, 25, yes.
Okay.
What I'm asking, what I, what I hear now is to go into more detail, into those specific programs and activities that are being funded and see where that reversion amount is coming from, to do a deep dive into the fund.
Sure, you can talk, I'll outline, thank you.
So, you know, looking at what Monarch's asking, there, is there, is there any way to reach out to them to ask them if, you know, the best we could do is fund that one FTE, mental health therapist, and we can't come up with the money for the clinical supervisor right now? Does that move the needle forward for them? Does that help them? Can I ask, it's 11:30, we haven't even started policy discussion, what is the plan? We have to have all these decisions today, so do we need to start canceling? Like, we have a thing with Capitol Lake, we may need to cancel, canceling the, I mean, this could take hours more from what I'm seeing.
If we do it, our commissioners check in?
We can reschedule that and stop. Because the timeframe that we structure for the amendment one process is one that isn't necessarily like the amendment, I mean, like the biennial. We can push that time back if necessary, so if we wanted to come back later today to discuss this or tomorrow, we can continue.
Yeah, we can look at our agenda and see what we push around to make sure that we have time to have these important discussions.
So we can meet at 2 o'clock, if we, we break at 12, because I know Commissioner Mejia and I have this thing Capitol Lake, and you guys are part of that too, so. Which, I can cancel that, but, you know, just whatever the preference of the people is. Capitol Lake's not going anywhere. It's waited 30 years, it could, it could wait another two days.
I know Taylor is probably cringing right now because it took forever to schedule this meeting with everyone scheduled.
Taylor, if you have an issue, speak now.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to go till 12 and then we'll, we'll pick this back up at 2.
Okay.
Reschedule whatever is at 2 and we'll keep going till it's done.
There's two executive sessions.
Two executive sessions and one of them we really need to hold today.
We can look at the other stuff and figure out what we move around.
Okay, so what is the best way to get TST taken care of, to, to a decision?
So there is a three options that Robin laid out, we can vote on those or we can come back from the budget office standpoint and give you more information if you need to.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? We're going to break it new. I can spend a short time with Nicole and Jennifer on a way to set this worksheet up so that it's a little more interactive and you can see the effect of each decision. And we'll pick TST up later today and right now we could move on to other topics. Get us till noon.
I, I really want to know from Monarch what, you know, like, hey, best we can do is one FTE, is that, is that?
Probably the FTE is, is I believe one commissioner's already.
I get that, the ongoing.
You wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't hire an FTE necessarily if you did not think you could continue that FTE.
But that would be their decision.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is pose it to Monarch and ask him within the request, if you were to break it up, what's the most, what's the most valuable component? And are they willing to, if they get it just for one year commitment, then the next year being reevaluated, are they going to proceed? We can do that research in addition to making some adjustments, I think that'd be really helpful.
Shaylyn is reaching out to them now, so we should hopefully have a response back in the back to her.
Thank you.
I'll be back and I'm back afternoon and session. I do need to pull your attention back to the grants packet, however, on our errata list, there are two grants from the sheriff's office where they're intending to get more grant revenue than what was originally presented to you on April 17.
Do you have a number on that?
Yes, so if you go, it is line, line 18.
Looking at this.
On the grant packet.
Not this grant.
It's on both.
Right, this is the change to that packet.
Okay.
So there would be on the grants packets, line 18 and line 23. So grant revenue is higher than anticipated from the last time we showed you the packet on April 17. They're asking just to change that grant revenue and match the expenses. So because it's a change, I have to just present it to you and see if that, if you're cool.
Why does it say under reason that the funding was reduced?
There was two, there was two projects within that grant funding where one project's revenue was decreased and one was increased, making a net increase. So.
So who knows the answer to?
So the answer.
Commissioner Mensah's question.
So within that grant funding, there are two identified projects. One project's grant revenue was decreased, another one was increased. And so the net is an increase, that line there is just speaking to the one project, it doesn't talk about the other one.
So is that an accounting thing that you're fixing because of the grants were?
Yeah, so they're getting more revenue in one of those projects than anticipated and less in another.
It's a cleanup item?
Yeah, it's more revenue, exactly, unanticipated receipts, more revenue in.
Revenue is exactly the same as the expenditure they're asking for.
So it's a net.
So it's technical.
Yeah.
So.
So thumbs up.
Still thumbs up on the grant.
Still thumbs up on the grants. 16 and 23, okay. So that's taken care of. The next packet, policy level Blake. This packet, the Blake funding has been extended, so this is revenue that will associate with the expenses, it's a net impact. And we can reverse our expenses, we'll get the revenue in, so there will be no impact to the general fund. There were no follow-up questions on this, so I'll ask for the vote. Is that five? I think so, I can't find the page, but I think so. I'll, it says policy level Blake at the top.
It's a page one of two at the bottom.
It's in the green. So you'll see the revenue and expenses match each other. Yes, five thumbs up. The next request is policy level public safety sales tax. And so this is to move from public defense, the public PAO, and also from the sheriff's office, the expense authority inside of general fund, and moving it out of the general fund into the respective funds and also transferring over the maintenance of effort that was approved for the proviso. Yes.
I thought we were going to have a work session about this, kind of just walking through everything because there seemed to be a lot of confusion between commissioners, the sheriff, and then just what is actually happening? How is everything going? So when are we going to have that?
Are you thinking about, request talks about, both requests talk about the budget and how the money's moving around?
Exactly, and so if we're going to be doing the transfer now, right, I, I just, I think we need to have that information clarified and cleared out for us to be able to actually explain what the action is.
So that had been scheduled yet.
Okay.
I think that, and I say that it's also important, you have the time, you have the team to discuss, but I understand what you're saying about this action being presented now. Understand what the questions are and how we're presenting the information, I felt questions about that.
So then this packet is moving that authority from general fund to public safety sales tax, but based on this conversation, is this something that we want to approve now or we want to come back after that work session? And we, we would have to make the change at the end of the midterm, if there's any authority that you're moving from one fund to another.
I would like to wait until that work session.
So this will not increase or decrease authority to be able to move this, it just makes all that authority that was approved in 24, it's a technical correction to move it into another fund. We can wait, to make that change to wait, we need to do it during the midterm.
What we're doing, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, so we can, well, do you have something to add?
I'm there with Commissioner Klaus as well.
So.
They'll continue to spend out of the general fund.
Within their appropriation that you approved in 24, instead of spending it out of the new fund at that same level, they're just going to spend it out of the general fund.
So there's not really any impact aside from like internal analysis of where the funds are going? Because this would be transferred over anyways, but now it's just going to be spent from where it's at?
Right, that is correct.
I would like to wait then, it doesn't sound like it would negatively impact the sheriff's department, right?
One way or the other, it will. So their appropriation, $26 million is in the general fund. This request is asking to not have that appropriation in general fund, to put it in another fund.
Where the public safety taxes come.
Public safety sales tax.
Transfers over their appropriation that they already have, that maintenance level of effort then just shifts over into the new fund where it has to go and it belongs anyways. And is that going to complicate the shift in the future?
No, so we have designed accounting strings within the funds to be able to clearly see what is being shifted from one piece to another. So we can run the works and be able to see that in the future.
When you start drawing down the safety sales tax, but we're going to draw down the general fund, is it going to be issued in the future with that?
It's going to be issued in the future, we will be able to clearly see. Because your public, your revenue that comes in from your public safety sales tax is on a code that says public safety sales tax. So when it's recorded in the fund, you can see that revenue in there. The revenue that's coming from the general fund is recorded on a string that says revenue from the general fund, so you will see those two revenue sources in there. You will be able to see the expense authority that was in the general fund now with public safety sales tax.
If they did the transfer.
If they did the transfer.
But they won't, if they don't, then it just continues as is.
As is.
We said we would not supplant, if we transfer that over, does, that just puts that whole conversation to bed, I mean, in my mind, right?
The, the transfer helps you ensure that there is no supplantation.
Yeah.
Because then any reversion doesn't impact the amount that you're committed to spending. That's part of the reasoning behind wanting to do the transfer, it just makes it crystal clear that there has been no supplantation.
Yeah.
Is that maintenance of effort, that amount of money that was specified as that supplanting that you're speaking to, will, you will see that dollar amount moved into public safety sales tax.
So I'm, I'm just confused because the, the confusion I thought wasn't, was about, wasn't about the transfer of the money in, in this action, the confusion was about then how expenses would be allocated to the general fund versus the new fund. So I, I don't, I don't understand how this action is related to confusion, I guess I'm looking at my seatmates.
So I think it was just like the whole piece of it, right? This is just one part of it and the other part is that as well. But if we were to transfer this now, I think there was just questions on like, well, how do we like, it was just a whole budgeting, just questions that the sheriff and Heidi had questions about and just a lot of confusion on, and we heard it from him and from Heidi and so, you know, he started saying some things that confused me and I was like, well, that's not how I understood the shift was going to work. And so that's kind of where I'm confused and I'm wondering like if we do this now, right? And then without addressing what the confusions are, I, at this point, I just wouldn't feel comfortable answering any questions that I got asked about this and how, you know, how it would be basically allocated and understanding the supplanting piece of things, but also just trying to, I think, once it gets to the nitty-gritty, I just wouldn't feel comfortable answering any questions. So that's why I'm waiting till we have a work session to kind of discuss and have everyone who's being affected by this in the same room and receiving the same information, because I think it's been a game of telephone where, you know, I'm, I've been trying to explain this and I think I've caused confusion or, and then I'm hearing stuff and then I'm confused, so. That's kind of where I'm.
So the proposal is just to not, just to scrap this packet?
Yeah, that could be, and we could come back with a work session and dive down into those questions and clarify it before the action's taken.
I have a question. In terms of kind of what Commissioner Mensah was saying about like any unforeseen consequences of this in the future, is there any chance that like we pull this from the general fund and then later if we do decide to make the shift, they say, okay, well, what was pulled from the general fund doesn't count towards maintenance of effort or anything else? And so that money was just additional and then we have to transfer, does that make sense? Like, maintenance of effort is what we're transferring over, right? That's what's proposed here.
Yes.
So if we were to say like, okay, we're going to do this in the midterm and let's say 600, just throwing out a number, 600,000 was spent between now and the midterm, that was pulled from the general fund and then we make the shift, does the shift have to be maintenance of effort? Or would we like kind of prorate it and be like, 600,000 is not going to get shifted over because it was already spent from the general fund?
That is part of the complication.
I just want to make sure we, before we scrap this packet and do it in the midterm, make sure that there's not going to be additional money like pulled from the general fund now that like, it might just complicate it.
We're still using a 2023 baseline, right?
Yeah.
The maintenance of effort level that you cannot supplant will not change.
Yeah, and that's the key, is that what you, Commissioner, I, I, I didn't hundred, hundred percent understand your question, but is that what you're worried about? Is that the baseline would, would raise if we don't?
Right, yeah, and I don't think it would, but just in, I just want to throw it out there just in case before we decide to scrap this packet.
That's kind of where I was.
Nicole, would that happen?
No, so the amount has been identified, that dollar amount has been already identified during the 24, 25 budget process in the proviso. So we could do it today or we could do it tomorrow, not unless you decide to change that number, that number is set.
Okay. Lines five through eight in your packet is the amounts.
You can transfer more, but you cannot transfer, or you can spend more, but you can't spend less.
Would we like inadvertently commit ourselves to spending more by making this decision now? Do we need to check with legal on that or are we a hundred percent sure?
So the sheriff's department, just like any other, or office, just like any other department or office, has an appropriation. So they have to spend within their appropriation, they cannot go over that appropriation unless you decide to amend that appropriation. So if that appropriation is in the general fund or you decide today to move that into public safety sales tax, that appropriation is set. It doesn't matter if the revenues come in more or they come in less, that appropriation is determined and not unless you change it, it, it is what it is. And also the maintenance of effort, that decision has already been decided, so that does not change with increases in revenues or decreases in revenues, it's your expense authority.
So we would have time then to round this out, get to the core of what the questions are, prepare a briefing and make sure that when, when we're ready to do that, that we can bring the sheriff in with the commission and all be on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's fair, if there's still some uncertainty in things, we could take the time to discuss that. So I'm hearing that we're waiting on public safety sales tax. Okay, thumbs down at this point in time.
I was thumbs downs on that.
Okay.
I want to put it to bed, but I'm sure that I'm.
So I officially need to call for a vote then, right? So for the public safety sales tax fund, uh, packet, I'm calling for the vote.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, so.
Commissioner Edwards, where are you? So it's three to one to zero, three to one to one, two, turn this down.
But because we're going to come back in and deal with this fairly soon, it sounds like.
If we don't do it now, we can't do it until.
Till the end of the year.
Till the midterm.
So even though we're going to have a discussion about it, it doesn't solve it.
It will not fix it this year, so you will have discussions during, whenever the board work sessions are scheduled, decisions made. It will not fix it this year. So you will have discussions during, whenever the board work sessions are scheduled, decisions made during the midterm. It will go into effect until January of twenty-twenty-five if that decision is not made now.
We're not going to have any money coming in.
He's retired. Uh, he's retired.
I'll change my vote.
No, it's not that. No, I want the word.
Me too.
Yep.
Off on it then?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I'm changing my vote this way, so. We're all voted, so.
So.
So. Oh, wait a minute now. If, if you're going to do that, I'm going to be with you.
I'm lost now.
Only.
Let's vote again.
I, I don't, I don't want the thing to linger on and on. I was thinking we were having a solution to this.
Still bringing back a briefing to get to the core of the issues, some of which are how, how the, the budget moves around between the Sheriff's Department and the Budget Office. That can happen regardless of.
I think there's an absolute lack of clarity and I'm all in favor of the work session. I just don't think that the lack of clarity relates to the setting up of the funds, which is all this is doing. I think the lack of clarity is then all the decisions that come after that.
Right.
We need to work those out with, but I'm okay, I personally am okay with just this fund setup. But so I would vote to go forward.
Thumb thing again?
Okay, so thumbs forward on the packet.
Okay, I, I'm going to, no, I'm going to go up. I'm going to go up with it.
It's three to two to move forward.
To set it.
But still a work session.
Yes, but still a work session to talk about. We've learned of one we had before, but new things have come up. We tried to do this and we did have the work session with all the players. We got some things clarified, but I agree with Commissioner Mejia, other questions have come on that we need to continue to try to sort through.
That's, that's my only reason.
So I'm looking at time. We have ten minutes left and we're getting into policy level personnel. Yeah, they might take a little bit more time.
Um, can we make, I have additional requests. I heard from other commissioners that they have requests as well. Is this, since we won't have enough time to jump into everything, can we bring this, those items up right now? So then we can have further discussion at two?
I think that makes sense because if there's anything we need to follow up on, we can take the break to do that.
Okay.
I, I have, I have one such thought slash request.
What?
Um, uh, for DV's program. So we got that letter that had some issues that were brought up. And, you know, like we had talked about, maybe there were two separate issues in the, in the letter. And one that I would like to mention is that, you know, we do have a DEI program that has no program funding. You know, I, I, I was going to try to meet with DV later to ask her what she would like for funding or what she was hoping for. So I don't know exactly what that number would look like, but I was picturing somewhere around thirty, forty thousand dollars for DV's program to help set up, you know, some of the affinity group type stuff that she was talking about, the publications. At least give her some money to build the program. I, I don't, I don't think that's a lot to ask.
Is this ongoing funding or is it one-time funding?
It would, yeah, I, it would be ongoing funding.
And then my request is, uh, I would like to request, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars, two thousand six hundred. As a hold, um, the, um, utility, uh, committee is going to be meeting later in May to discuss the, well, they're going to be discussing multiple things. But one of the items they're going to be discussing is the tax title property, um, that has come up in front of the board. And, uh, you know, they are going to bring it up as it serving as a potential buffer uh, to the sewer plant. And so I am asking the board to consider kind of just a hold for that twenty-six hundred uh, in case the utility, uh, advisory mission decides to, you know, proceed with the thumbs up that you have the funding to, to purchase the property.
What is the utility advisory committee, what, what do they have to decide?
Well, they're going to, uh, you know, be making a recommendation whether this property would serve as a buffer to the Boston Harbor Sewer Plant.
Buffer between what and what?
Uh, a, I'm not the correct person. I, I can, um, kind of look through my email and bring more information, but it's just, basically what they relayed is that, uh, all the other utility company, utilities that we own have buffers around the area just to kind of, um, you know.
So this would be Public Works purchasing it.
Just public works.
Purchasing it from ourselves.
To add some more property in the envelope of that Boston Harbor.
So, yes, we've already heard from Public Works that they do not need it, but.
They, they met, when they were here last week, Jennifer said she was reevaluating.
Oh.
Yeah, and those, those strong words weren't necessarily used.
Reevaluating.
Yeah, and I want to say one other thing on that topic is that Jennifer said somebody else said they didn't need it. She, that was, those were not her words.
All right, then, then let's, uh, we'll follow up.
And then I'm curious, what funds do both of these requests come out of?
So I'll follow up with your.
So the only, the only available funding for the, um, uh, the DV, the DEI request would be general fund. And the, uh, if the utility actually needs the buffer, then that could be purchased by the utility out of the utilities fund.
Okay, so one would drain the general fund.
Drain is a harsh word.
Well, helps drain it, helps drain it. And the other would be, uh, a dedicated fund that we have plenty of money in.
Well, I'm asking for it to come out of the general fund.
What's that?
I'm asking for it.
Capital.
Yeah, I'm asking for it to come out of the general fund. It's twenty-six hundred dollars. It's one-time expense. For now.
If the utility needs it, why should it be paid for?
Yeah, why, that's my concern. If they want to get it, they got money in their fund and it could be utilized for this.
So that, that's the question that'll go to the utility advisory committee is whether or not there truly is a need from the utility perspective and then making a recommendation.
Who, who's Brett presenting us on the utility advisory committee? Who's there?
Uh, it is, well, it would be supported by Public Works Utilities. But there are members from each of the four that the board recalls when we went through the process of doing the consolidation of the utilities, we retool.
The citizen group.
Right, there, there were four separate committees. There's now one with representation from each of.
Each committee, each just, just.
And Rob, I think what we have to work through is Public Works disposition on whether or not they believe they need it or not. Sounds like staff were told one thing, but the commissioners were told something. So we just want to, and maybe it's different people talking. Not saying that anyone's doing anything wrong, but just so we can bridge that together.
I do, um, I, you're, you should receive this letter. It's from the Boston Harbor Association. And, uh, it is a letter for all the commissioners in regards to this request.
I'm all for doing that, but I think it ought to come out of the utility fund myself.
I got one more. Commissioner, I was denied. Did you get leaned on from the Medical Equipment Bank?
Did I?
You were there.
I donated to it. What are you?
Well, they're, they're, they're trying to acquire a permanent location.
Oh, yeah.
Be making a funding.
I'd like to see that come out of the ARPA fund.
Yeah, me too.
What, what is the?
For the medical bank, for the.
They've gotten a, like, they've got a, they've got a temporary space for a few months, but it's not. It's just because of the, somebody knows the landlord who's in between tenants.
Is that one moving again?
They're going to have to move again.
Same one?
It just got set up in this new temporary space, but they're going to have to move again and they're, they've got a budget. They're working on a budget for a permanent space and they're down to like.
Uh, state money.
Yeah, they're down to like the last.
Yeah.
I want to say a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand would get them to their final.
Matching fund.
Matching, yeah, to the.
For the state money.
It's a pretty, um, you know, they've done a lot of work to get that.
Who was that sponsored with?
We did.
Our, who, a couple of our state representatives put that through.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Was it Bateman and, uh?
I don't, I don't even know if they mentioned the people.
Yeah, they did. They mentioned that to me.
They told me, they, they told me the different amounts. They, they're looking for like a million dollars and they're, or seven, I don't know.
I can't remember the dollars.
Several hundred thousands of dollars.
That's a request.
They've got like eighty percent of it done. So it was like a question of, you know, can we help them get to.
Get over the threshold. I'm with you on that, whatever. I don't know all the facts that you do, but there.
So anyway, there's one, Commissioner.
Yeah, here's my last one, but it's a big one. Uh, we, we talked about the Family Juvenile Court and we all know that their control system is haywire. We have four million in surplus funds that are being carried over. It's a one-time cost. I would like to see like one point two million put in to do that fix. I know that we, we have requested a federal earmark to fix it, but we don't know that that's going to come through. So I'd like to see us set that money, obligate that money. And then, you know, perhaps we could sit on it until we find out if that federal earmark is funded. But I, I do feel that this is a need and not a want and, and we've been briefed on it quite a bit.
It's the, um.
I thought we fixed it.
I have a question about the congressional earmark and I don't know how we could follow up on this. But if we were to be successful at receiving that, does that come with non-supplant? Because if it does and you've appropriated money for that project, then we would not be able to use the earmark.
Well, we could appropriate money for the Family Juvenile Court and just say that. I mean, you don't have to.
No, you can just say that. It's got to be in our capital improvement.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
For capital improvements at the Family Juvenile Court.
That vague.
I've not seen, and my perspective is if, for instance, Rob, we'd have to verify, but I've not seen earmarks come with non-supplant language. But we'd have to check.
We'd have to check.
Yeah, the burden of hands work more than two in the bush and we need to get this fixed.
I thought we had, didn't we?
I agree.
Say this.
It needs to get fixed.
No, we, we decided to dedicate money to studying how much we need and there's still an estimate of somewhere around a million dollars.
We've committed to the design. We don't have money for the project. That's the big problem with that.
And we looked into that. So that's actually in your packet. We reached out to Rick. I think the amount is one point six million.
If we don't. We don't get that money from that earmark, we could always take that money in my estimation out of our emergency fund.
Well, if, I mean, that, that surplus doesn't change. If we don't obligate it now, we can obligate it later, but it's. Yeah.
Are there, are there?
Just real quick, uh, everybody's got an email from April twenty-fifth on the real, all the specifics on the Medical Equipment Bank. So they're looking for five hundred. They raised one twenty-five. They got a two hundred and fifty from Senator Hunt, Representative Bateman, Representative Doleo. But they have to match it and they need another hundred and twenty-five to match and then the closing and inspection costs. So their total needs one seventy at this point to close the deal on their.
I did not get that email. Can it be?
Yeah, well, you were included in it, but I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy. April twenty-fifth.
This was a discussion that was used for ARPA funding in the past.
Uh, it came from Joyce Wilmes. She's the president of the board. Of, um, the Thurston County Council on Aging.
Anything else to put on the table before we?
I'm done.
Do one of our lists have the shift back to the road fund?
We do have it on the errata list. We can discuss that.
All right, so we're breaking till two and we're going to pick up with an executive session and then right back into this, correct? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.